John's not here. Oh, there he is. It is 11 o'clock.
Are you ready? Good morning. We'll welcome you all to, all out to the county commission meeting, the regular scheduled meeting. It is June 6th at 11:00 a.m. We're located in the commission chambers. I would ask everybody to turn your cell phones to off, or at least put them on vibrate, if you would, please. We have a lot of information, a lot of items on the agenda today, so we'll move along as quick as we can. We'll start out with a prayer for Monica Hill, and then the pledge from Suzie Hamburg, or Suzie Anderson.
Our Father in heaven, we are grateful that we could be gathered in this mission being the safe. We are grateful for the opportunities which we have to discuss that concerns our county, and to provide solutions for those needs that we are facing. We ask thee to bless our law enforcement and the citizens of our county. We ask thee to bless us with our insufficient facilities of our financial stability. We ask thee bless us with peace and safety. We are grateful for all those who work to bless those around us and save these things in this Christ.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Monica. Thank you, Suzie. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for May 23rd, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for May 23rd, 2022.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Next item would be the report of the warrants and review of countersignatures certified list of claims.
Commissioners, review of the warrants this time. There was 177,596.61, which were not created in the auditor's office per code. The next one, there is one claim that I would like to present, is check number 380294 to Red Rock Reporting. This came out of the grants from the public defender for $3,055.50. I'm sure when he did it, he wasn't, they were not sure what the fees would be, but there was no P.O. issued on this.
Did we have two warrants?
Well, I, I.
Yes, we did. So that first one was. Let me, okay, let me start. May 27th, in the amount of 442,834.5. I do not recall anything major out of the ordinary on that one. Mountain West Truck Center, there was two checks for 218, total of 218,537. I believe we finally received the trucks that was ordered over a year ago.
A couple of.
Two of them. Then the second one is June 3rd, in the amount of 177,596.61.
Okay.
Which also neither one of those were created or modified in the, in the auditor's office. Then the Red Rock Reporting for transcripts.
And that's a certified list of claims?
That's a certified list of claims.
Okay. Entertained a motion?
Well, I have a list, I've got 89, um, the claims, but they go back to the 3rd of March. Some of them have, I think, already been dealt with, but I haven't had a chance to compare them against this list. So I'll have to do that maybe for next time.
Okay. So entertain a motion?
We need a motion to accept the warrants?
No, just a certified list of claim, just the one.
Okay.
I'll second it.
I made motion, yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Cemetery certificates.
Just three today. Commissioners, starting off with Mazor Cemetery, Nancy Colton, Lot 847, spaces 1 and 2. Moving to the Rock Point Cemetery Phase 2, Deborah Bingham, Block 336, Lots, Lot C, spaces 1 and 2. Moving to the Vernal Cemetery, Jeffrey Shoal and Jody Shoal, Lot 217, spaces 20, 21, 28, and 29.
Okay. Any questions? Entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to accept the cemetery certificates as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Tax matters today.
I have three items today. The first one is a refund for a motor vehicle in the amount of $20 in Tax District 4 for Lyle Harlow. They sold their trailer, but when they received their registration, they renewed it. And so it's gone through the process of the state refund.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want me to do all of them, or?
No, are they different?
The other two are business personal property.
Yeah, let's do this one separate. Entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to refund the amount of $20 for a duplicate registration.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Okay, the other two items are for business personal property. The first one is for $198.93 on account number 1413 in Tax District 24. And when they filed, they qualified for the exemption, but received a PDF showing an amount due, and they paid it. Okay? The other one is in the amount of $297.91 on account number 3655 in Tax District 4, and they just overpaid on their account.
Okay. Any questions? Entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we refund the money for 198.93 and 297.91 as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other tax matters today? Business licenses.
Good morning, Gabby Hawks Blackburn with Community Development. We just have one today. It's a commercial business, Willow Park LLC. They are a multifamily housing management service. So they're located at 110 North 2500 West in the multifamily there that's by Mazor 711. It's a zoned commercial, and they're applying for a commercial business license. Our building department went out, checked it out, and everything seemed to be in order. So we recommend approval of this business license with the condition that they follow all UNA County Business License rules and regulations.
Okay. Any questions?
Oh, I should probably read the parcel number. Sorry about that.
Be great.
It's 041260055.
Okay. Any questions? Entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the commercial business license for Willow Park LLC as presented, and the provision that they comply with all of the UNA County Business License conditions.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is ratification of the 2022 May tax sale.
Commissioners, on May 26th, the annual tax sale was, was held. We sold five parcels. Serial number 448 and 3 was sold for $2,100. These were all sold for more than the taxes address fee. So part of this will be returned, will go to unclaimed property. So serial number 448 and 3 was sold for $2,100. Serial number 466 and 28 was sold for $27,500. 467102 was sold for $13,600. 467103 was sold for $14,006. And serial number 1344 and 56 was sold for $6,500. So with that, commissioners, I present this for your ratification, and upon this, I will then issue tax deeds to these individuals.
Okay.
I have a quick question. All paid on time in the proper amounts?
There was one that I was getting worried about. I called him about 2 o'clock. He did show up about 2:30 and did pay that property.
Okay.
So these were all paid on time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we, at this time, ratification of the 2022 May tax sale as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Next one is discussion and ratification of surplus properties. Is that yours too, Mike?
Commissioners, we put a total of five parcels up that were surplus properties for the county that we were in attempt to get rid of. First one I'll talk about is property serial number 50240121, commonly known as the, at the address of 145 West, 100 North. This was our Turning Point Shelter. This sold for $334,425, which did meet the minimum that was on the, given to us by the county assessor. $15,925 will be moved on to the premium that was, that's part of that money to the public surplus who performed the auction for us. So that one there, recommend we do that one. The next one is serial number 06360089, 1148 East, 4,000 South. This is the old Johnson home that sat on 4,000 South. Total bid price on that one, the top bidder backed out, so it went down to the next one. And so total bid price on this, and with the premium, was $52,605. We have received both these payments. Both these were received within the seven day time period that was required. Of that $52,605, public surplus will get $2,505. County admin fee on this one is $24.50, because we've taken this through two sales now. So the $24.50 is their sale. The county treasurer will see $5,103.38 for back taxes, penalties, and interest that will move on to the tax entities, because this was a tax sale property. This first one was physically owned by the county outright. We purchased that one. So then we will send to unclaimed properties, 42,546.62. So with that one, commissioners, if I could get a motion to approve those two, then I want to discuss the next two parcels, three parcels, actually.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, any questions on those?
You have any questions? Okay, entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the sale of the two properties listed as Turning Point and the old Johnson place as presented by Mike Wilkins. Ratify that sale.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passed.
Okay, commissioners, these next two are lots in the Haven Estates. We received a, multiple bids on these. After discussing with the county assessor, she gave us a market value of $31,568 on these. The first one, if we, I'm going to recommend we accept these bids and reach out to these bidders to let them do that if it's with you guys. With the buyer's premium on that one, it was $32,550, but our reserve was $31,568, but they attacked the reserve on top of that. So it did not reach the reserve, but with that, public surplus would get $1,550. This was, again, was a county's tax sale property. $24.50 would come back to the county for admin fees. We'd recommend we pay off the Vernal City liens, as was discussed in the prior meeting, of $9,425. $7,452 would go to the county treasurer for taxes, penalties, and fees, leaving $11,672. So we're within 3% of market value. That's, and we're actually over if you considered the premium that was paid. So, and after discussing with county assessor, that's pretty much fair market value on that one.
Didn't we try to sell these, this lot and the other one in our last tax sale a year ago?
That is correct, and we received no bids on it.
It wasn't even as close.
So with this, by accepting these, because we are so close to what, in fact, this one is, when you add the premium on it, we're above the sale price, and, or above the assessor value of $31,568, and it gets it back on the tax roll.
Did the appraised price include the obligation of Vernal City's?
We made the statement that we would pull that out of the fees, out of the revenue, no. Out of the sales price, we would pay those off. So Vernal City's paid, so whomever gets this lot now gets a lot without the Vernal City liens on it.
Okay.
Because this money, any excess money above the Vernal City liens, the county liens, and our fees goes to unclaimed properties. So.
I would like to see us get rid of it. We, we have to send our weed department and our maintenance guys over there to keep the weeds down and, and keep them up. We're close enough on the money.
That would be my recommendation, and also after discussion with the county assessor, the same thing, is that we let this and sell for that price. It was so close to being what it was. John's wanting to make a comment, I can tell.
Yeah, I just, well, I, I didn't want to interrupt you, I was signaling that I was going to say something. And I think is, I can't tell, is Barbara here?
Yes.
There you are. Hi, Barbara. Anybody who does assessments and things of that nature, also understand that buyer interest or interest in the property also establishes fair market value. So if this is the interest we're getting from potential buyers, I mean, if, if you can't sell it for what it's assessed for, or what it's appraised for, but you're getting other offers, what I'm saying is that starts to establish what fair market value is for the property. So I think even though we are a little bit below, based off of what we're hearing, we are a little bit below, but that is the arms-length transaction interest in these two properties, I think we're fine saying that that is establishing a, a more accurate fair market value.
And just so you know, we had multiple bids on these properties.
It sounded like there was more interest this time around, so we can.
Yeah, there was multiple bids from.
Can rely on.
All over.
We can rely on that public interest.
But the two top right now are actually UNA County bidders, which made me feel good on that part of it.
Yep.
As far as my market value goes, I have to be within 5% of market value, and that is within that leeway, too.
Yeah. So I, yeah, I think we're, I think we're on good footing to discharge these properties. We've been trying for a while.
We've had these for nine years or better.
Yeah.
So, and, so that's that property serial number 050540224. Making, we would have to reach out to that bidder and say, we're going to award it to you, and assuming that they accept to stand behind the original bid, then we would sell that.
Is that the same on both lots, the same bidder?
No, two different bidders, actually.
Do we need to prove this one at a time?
I think we probably ought to prove both of them by serial number.
Okay, let's read that serial number.
So that one was 050540224, for $32,550 was what the total amount bid.
I didn't get all that written down that quick.
This is lot number 124 in the Haven Estates.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we go ahead and reach out to the bidders and accept the bid for the serial number of 050540224, Lot Number 124 in Haven Estates, for the amount of $32,500.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
This next property, again, is 04, 05, 0540116, Lot Number 116 in the Haven Estates. This one, I'm careful, one of these, they had to take sewer another 600 feet, and I, I think it was this lot, but please don't hold me to that one.
I think it is.
Is this in the lot? Okay. This one, they've got it, so that total bid on this property was $29,347.50. Again, her bid was, her assessor's price was $31,568 on both these lots, so we're variance of 7% on that one. But again, the, would pay out the Vernal City loans, or liens, county taxes is paid, the admin fees paid, public surplus, and 8,617 would go to unclaimed property. So again, I would recommend on this one, under the same circumstances discussed on the last one, gets it on the tax roll, hopefully they will build a home on them, and we'll have more.
And it was $29,334.
$347.50.
And this one's not really a value the same as the other one, because you have to run the sewer.
They got to take sewer a little further on this one. The other one is, is right there, I understand.
Okay.
And so with this, can we get permission that if this, the high bidder doesn't, can we go to the next bidder down?
What is it?
I would, I didn't bring that with me, I'm just.
We probably need to have that information.
It's going to be within $100, because they were, yeah, within, maybe within a thou, let's go $1,000, because they got pretty, it was actually very interesting to, because when they bid it, it opened up for five more minutes, and Turning Point went on for like 45 minutes after closing. It, they kept bidding on that one. And just so you know, when that guy came and paid, he is from Washington DC area, and he plans on moving here and remodeling it and living in it.
Wow.
That's what he's told us, whether it's true or not, anyway. So that's Lot 1, Lot 16 in the Haven Estates on that one.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would just add on the same one, let's make sure the legislative record is for both parcels, but I would make the same comments on this one. Add an additional comment that I think we have, not a statutory duty, but a professional duty to Vernal City to make them whole as well. They've been sitting on this financial obligation for quite a long time. And so I think to the residents of Vernal City, it's wise for us to, to just move on, get, get these things back on the tax rolls, get Vernal City made whole, get our own offices and departments made whole, and be, be done with these two parcels.
I'm quite sure except making them whole on this, but.
As far as their lien, as far as their lien goes, we'll hold other things over their head later on.
Does, does that lien accrue more each year, or has that been the same for years?
Quinn here from Vernal City. From, not from what I've seen, what they filed, it's, it stays the same.
I think it's the same as, because.
It was not interest-bearing.
The past history of that development, there were some bankruptcy issues that went through, and then reacquisition, and there were some safety issues with the trenches being there, and so Vernal City stepped in to just finish that and fill it in, and then they recorded a lien on the properties.
That is correct.
That, that's my understanding of.
That's my understanding. Part of these are utility liens, part of these is their sidewalk and their road in front of it.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the sale, accept the bid of $29,347.50 for parcel 0554116, Lot 116 in Haven Estates, and allow for, if, if this bid does fall through, to go to the next highest bidder.
Yeah, and the same on that other, because we're, at this point, it's closed, we're going to, we need to reach out to them.
Okay. Okay, have a motion?
Do we need that in there to accept Vernal City's, or to pay the Vernal City's part of this, too? Do we need that in the motion, or?
It, it's a part of the terms of the sale.
All right. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
There was one other. This one was the building by Buckskin Hills. We tried to get a dollar out of it, and we did receive one bid for a dollar, but he turned around and rejected it once he found out that he had to move the building. So that one there, there was no sale on that one, so it's up to the county to dispose of that building as they see fit.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mike. Next item is bid opening and possible bid award for Western Power Kai Shrink and Amphitheater Project.
Commissioners, we did receive three bids. The first one is from CRS Engineers out of Vernal. These were all received on time.
And this is all any architectural engineering bids?
I believe so.
Okay.
Design cost. $15,400. Nope, 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 nope. That's a reference. Trying to find where their bid price is.
You'll have to come up to the microphone.
You'd have to come up to a microphone. State your name.
Craig Nebiker, CRS Engineers. I'm just trying to save you some time.
Okay.
We responded to a request for qualifications. No numbers will be in there.
Okay.
There won't be any bid numbers for the price. It's a qual, it's a request for qualifications, what we understood that to be, whether everybody else understood that in the same way or not, I don't know.
That I'm not sure of, commissioners.
What's that, $15,400?
That was a, what they, what their cost was for a building in somewhere else. So that was not their bid price at all. That was a reference that they was using. Craig, you remember what project that even was? Oh, right there. Sandy City Amphitheater.
Oh, okay.
So then with that, understanding there, first bid is CRS Engineering's for, for qualifications.
Chair, I can make a comment here. When you're going for professional services, essentially you're going for qualifications first, then you go to, maybe it's an hourly rate, once you've discussed the project, or they'll do a flat fee rate, but you are going for qualifications first. Similar to if we're, you know, if we need to get outside legal counsel, we go and find somebody who can do the work first, and then we, then, then you consider the price of it after that. So I, I was anticipating we would get essentially a big resume packet from each interest.
And that does show a lot of that.
And maybe a quick fee schedule showing hourly rates.
Schedule is included in that.
But that, that's about what we would be getting under this type of a request.
Okay.
And with that statement being made, the next one is from UN Engineering and Land Surveying out of Vernal. And I'm sure the same thing on that, so. Next one, I'm not even trying to pronounce that, so let me open it up. They're out of St. Louis, Missouri. Next one, I'm not even trying to pronounce that, so let me open it up. They're out of St. Louis, Missouri. And they have got it sealed good. And I can tell my knife needs to be sharpened.
I have a sharp one if you need it.
It'll be the same thing anyway.
If I can at least see who it's from.
That's how I wrap Christmas presents, right there.
Yeah!
They seem to be thorough.
C-H-I-O-D-I-N-E Architects.
C-H-I-O what?
C-H-I-O. Could even be I-A-D-I-N-E. Shadoney, Shadon Architects. C-H-I-O-D-I-N-I. And they are out of according where they mailed it from, they're out of St. Louis, Missouri.
Okay.
So.
I think we're gonna have to look at them.
Yeah, I've.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's some options. If we wanted to try a ward today, then you can, at, at the end of the meeting, you can recess, review them this afternoon to a date cert- or a time certain this afternoon, or just acknowledge acceptance of the qualifications, and then award next week. How, but it's, it's, it's up to you all.
The only, the only advantage of, of doing, doing it later today would be getting somebody hired so we can get moving, because they have, what, three weeks or four weeks to get the plans put together?
Yeah, the request was to have it done by July first.
July first, and that would give them an extra week if we, if we did it later on, so. What this, just, just for the public's knowledge, what, what this is for is, um, we received some money from the federal government. It's the, what they call the ARP money, ARP. Do we agree that we get this free money? Not really. Wish they wouldn't give it away, but they are gonna give it away. And so our point is to get every ounce of it we can to get spent in UNA County, because it's grant money that you don't have to give back. Um, and so this is a project, the ice rink with picking up the Oilers, and the high school team, and the, the clubs, and the, the the use that is, that is going on at the ice rink. It needs remodel. It hasn't been touched since they built it. And so we're just adding some locker rooms and some showers and some more seating, and then a little bit better entryway. So it's, it's not a great big project, but it is something that's needed. And then the amphitheater has been there for, what, thirty years? And it's never been touched, and this is a time that we can do it and not have to use taxpayers' money to do it. So we're gonna, these are two projects we're looking at moving forward with on that, so. Um, I would like to see us, at the end of the meeting, um, take time to, to go through, but it's up to you guys, you making the motion.
I would suggest that too, if I'm thinking that we better move forward with that. So I, do we need that in the motion, or do we, how do we do that, John?
So the chair is able to do it under the chair's authority at the, at the end, and the meeting can go into recess. I would suggest so we continue to follow Open Public Meeting Act, that we have one person from the County Commission, and then representatives from Western Park and myself and facilities probably. I don't know if Jess is where he is today. I'm sure he's out doing a lot of good work, but because it is dealing with an actual physical building, uh, that that would be our review committee, so to speak, and then we can come back, you know, if, if we were to recess to three o'clock this afternoon, or four o'clock this afternoon, give that group time to review them. If we can't come to a consensus on a recommendation, the committee could just report back and say we need some more time to review this. But if we can look at it and, and one is standing out based off of the, the RFQ, then the committee can come here and, and make a recommendation for award and present that to the County Commission.
Okay, I'm gonna move this item to the end of the meeting, so we see what time it is when we're finished.
Okay.
So we have plenty of time.
I think that's appropriate.
So, thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the amendment number two, to read revitalization contracts, two-two, DWS zero one three nine. Who has that?
Mr. Chairman, I thought Zeke was going to be here, but I can, what it is, is we need to, uh, add, uh, from our revitalization fund that we need to transfer eighty-five, or applying to get the eighty-five thousand dollars back out there to operate our, uh, vouchers for the homeless people.
Okay.
We can probably clarify that, and it's, uh, we've already got it in, uh, in there for a request, uh, and, uh, but it was around eighty-five thousand, I know that, and it, uh, just needs to be brought to a commission meeting to, for approval, uh, the revitalization funds that we have that we get from the state.
Is this going to, uh, U-Bag?
Yes, will be given to U-Bag to take care of our bus tickets and our, uh, homeless people.
Rooms and stuff.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve, um, amendment, uh, number two, to number two, the revitalization contract, number twenty-two dash DWS oh one thirty-nine.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I don't have it down. I think the Commissioner said eighty-five thousand dollars, but I didn't want to s-
Yeah.
I believe that is in the change, but since I don't have it in front of me, I didn't state that.
It was.
And Mr. Chair, I, I went to the link, and it looks like the, that it's a certain time period, so that has expired, but Zeke should be able to track that down with the, the email from. It's Sarah Smith. Is the individual that sent it to the, to the county. So we may just need to have them reestablish the link, because it's an electronic signature.
Okay. With that, the motion passed. Okay, next one is, uh, discussion regarding limitations on federal inmates at the UNA County Correctional Facility.
Sheriff Leabrum, I, are you ready for a long story?
Long as it needs to be.
Okay. So obviously, we're all aware of COVID and what that's done to all of us, for the county jail and our contract with the state. Uh, we're not able to house as many state prisoners because state prison doesn't have as many prisoners now. We've, we've let a lot of them go, and what is left in the prison right now are older folks that are on oxygen, needing a lot of medical care, or very violent prisoners that we're not able to take in the county jail here. So last year, well, and on top of that, the prison, obviously we built a new prison that's supposed to open in July or August of this year, and they are down four hundred correction officers, so they're not even able to open parts of the new prison that isn't big enough to handle the amount of prisoners that they currently have. So, quite the dilemma. So they are asking county jails to house some of those prisoners, but we still aren't up to numbers that we were before COVID. So right now, as of today, we're holding a hundred and fourteen state prisoners, that's sixty-one oh three a day, and so we're, we're down quite a bit. That, that revenue at a hundred and fourteen inmates for three hundred and sixty-five days is two million, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars, four hundred and fifty-eight and thirty cents. Last year, when this was all going on, I, I got ahold of the United States Marshal at the time, Matt Harris, and asked if we could house federal prisoners. Their rate is a little higher typically than the state, and those inmates, um, that they allow into a county facility are generally a little, little better inmate, a little better fit for a county jail. They, they know they're in for a long, long time, and so you have a little less problems with them. They wanna just do their time and get out. And so in that discussion, which Matt has now retired, but in that discussion, he wanted to send us forty-eight prisoners tomorrow, and we found out that the bond that we have on our facility, on the jail, we don't qualify for long-term federal prisoners. I can keep them for a very short amount of time. Um, if, if the marshals have a hold on somebody, if the FBI has a hold on somebody, if ICE has some, we can temporarily hold them, and we have, we have a rate that they'll pay for that, but I can't hold them for more than what it, what it takes for the marshals to transfer them to a facility that's qualified to have them by contract. So we do have a contract with them, which really helps us, but we're right now in negotiation with, with the feds to get a new current contract. Um, we haven't seen that, and we don't know what that rate would be, but our limitation is the bond that we have on the facility. I, I can't execute a long-term contract anyway with that. Um, contacting Tooele County, who holds federal prisoners. They're currently in negotiations to hold federal inmates for ninety dollars a day, plus, um, fifty dollars an hour for transports, and obviously that's still in the negotiation stage, but like I said before, the, the state's paying sixty-one oh three, so even if we get the equivalent of that, we're still, we're still upping our funds that we can put into the county to offset costs or run, run the jail. If you do the math on the, on forty-eight federal inmates, that's gonna, that's gonna up our income over a million dollars, just, just to have those forty-eight extra inmates, so, um, that's one of the dilemmas that I'm, I'm having where we're holding the current bond on the, on the jail.
Okay. What, what's, what's a total capacity of the jail, of the correction facility?
Well, we've, we've got obligations to the state, so we're, you know, we're probably gonna, we would probably be able to take forty-eight to sixty federal inmates, and then, you know, as slow as the state has been adding numbers, I mean, we could, with county inmates, we're, we're at about three hundred that we could take. Today, we sit at a hundred and seventy-six with county inmates, which just cost us money, and then a hundred and fourteen state.
Pre-COVID, what were you, what were the numbers?
Uh, we were in the mid-two hundreds typically. Just, you know, it changes every day, obviously, but.
To add these, do you have to add new employees, or can they be handled in the pods they're in, or what do you, what would the addition of forty-eight?
Well, I'm shorthanded right now, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think we could handle them.
With the staff?
Yeah, if your staff was there. With the current numbers we have.
So what, your biggest, your biggest problem right now is the bond that's in place, is what's stopping this from happening?
We can't take those because of the bond restrictions that, that has on it.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
How is, how is medical handled with federal inmates? I, I've never had to look at that issue, so do we know how that would be handled?
Yeah, they pay just like the state does. If we have to take them over to the hospital or the doctor.
But they have a certain rate that, that comes in on, on that? Okay.
Well, we've known this, um, we've known that was an issue, you know, um, having that bond, and we reached out. We met with Zion's, what was that, um?
In two weeks or so.
Two, three weeks ago, and discussed, discussed options that there was, um, that we have, um, with that, because the bonds are not callable, you know, right now. So we looked at, um, some of the bonds are being sold on open market, that we looked at maybe, you know, buying, buying them back ourself, um, or we've looked into some other options that, that we can do that would release us from that bond, and one of the, one of the options, the ones that, that I, that I've been looking into, and I feel like is our best option, is to take the money and defees that debt. And if we defees the debt and have it so it's completely tied up and the, the note is tied up, that, that releases that for us, um, with, with Zion's, and that would take us, I don't know, it'd take us close to twenty, twenty-six million to, to defees that debt. And so we've been talking back and forth with Zion's, and we've reached out to a couple different entities to get some, um, some knowledge on how that would work, and, and they, they should, they told us point blank that if we defees the debt, it would release us from that, so.
Perfect.
So that's something that we're, that, that I'm looking at, and, and something that we'll discuss today, um, during the, uh, the budget opener, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for your time. Let's see, the next item is ordinance number zero six, zero six, two zero, two two, oh one, Financial Administration. John, do you wanna?
So from the draft that I picked up, that you gave me this morning, I added some whereas clauses.
Set three sets of?
There's, there's three there.
On the back table, there was a, a draft. I don't know if you, anybody hadn't picked it up. This is a flow chart of how this, this ordinance flows, and how it puts the, um, the accounting, the purchasing, the incumb- incumbents, all the, the money, the payroll, how we're gonna receive the reports as a commission, um, and how the treasurer does, does her job. And that, that breaks it down and gives you a good flow chart of how that, that will happen. This conversation has been going on for a long time. Um, I'm gonna just highlight over it real quick. Uh, back in two thousand and twelve, the state legislation passed a bill that allowed County Commission to take the accounting services away from your clerk auditor. We all felt that that was way too far, that it, that there's no reason that you would do that, because you want to have, you want to have the commission involved, you want to have your clerk auditor involved, you want to have your treasurer involved. You don't want to take one leg completely out. And so there was, there was, we, we had acted and took part of the, the, uh, processing out, but we took it as far as we felt like was good and still be able to keep all three legs of the, of the stool in, in place. At that time, legislation came this year, and we, we, uh, met out there and talked back and forth on a, a bill that was called Senate Bill one sixty-two. And we came to an agreement on that of how the flow should happen. And with that, we've been working on an ordinance that we've been tasked with two ordinances that we, and we kind of combined them into one, if I understand this correctly, is one for our financial needs and one for our incumbents' reports that, that come out, so. With that, uh, we've been, we've put this draft out, we've been working with the state, we've sent it out to the state auditor's office, we've sent it out to, uh, our clerk auditor's office, and our treasurer's office got their comments, and up until this morning, we were still changing it. So we, we finally feel like we have the, the, uh, ordinance that we want to present. So with that, John, do you have any comments?
Yeah, so Commissioners, I was given the, the most recent draft this morning, and, uh, asked to add some whereas clauses, so the, the only insertion that I have for the draft uh, would be the whereas clauses. So we can go, we can go over that if you want, right now, and then if there's anybody else who actually wants to speak to the body of the ordinance, uh, that's fine. Um, the whereas clauses, uh, have, um, again, I was typing these up fast, so there may be some typos in there. But UNA County has the responsibility to- But U N A County has the responsibility to comply with Utah Code seventeen nineteen-eight two-oh-one to determine how accounting services shall be provided for the county. Whereas Utah Code annotated section seventeen thirty-six forty-three, seventeen thirty-six forty-four, and forty-five authorized the county legislative body to adopt a financial administration ordinance. And whereas the county legislative body may, in accordance with Utah Code seventeen fifty-three one-oh-six-two-a, little i, generally direct and supervise all elected county officers and employees to ensure compliance with general county administrative ordinances, rules, or procedures. And whereas, while there are significant deficiencies already documented against the state auditor's actions, the annual audit of U N A County performed by Larson and Company, which incorporated a subsidiary audit performed by the Office of the State Auditor, identified specific findings regarding financial administration, and the U N A County Commission agrees and stated that it would take necessary steps to fix. And whereas, U N A County finds there is a need to implement an internal control structure to ensure that all valid financial transactions of the county are identified and recorded accurately and timely. And whereas, U N A County finds it is in the best interest of the county and its residents to adopt best practices that minimize or eliminate the potential for waste, fraud, or abuse of county monies, as identified in the most recent financial audits. And whereas, U N A County finds that appropriate segregation of, one, the encumbrance of financial actions, two, the entry of encumbrances into the county financial records, and, three, the expenditure of funds to satisfy said encumbrances. And whereas, it is incumbent on U N A County to have proper and effective tracking procedures to maintain custody of assets. And whereas, by ordinance, these financial procedures will be required on all offices and departments of U N A County. Now therefore, the legislative body of U N A County ordains as follows. And then it goes into the draft. I, I will note that we need to discuss this, but it would need to be put in proper code format, where you have, you know, title section, title chapter sections. This would be rescinding, in current county code, we have two-point-zero-eight-point-oh-four-oh, which is the delegation of accounting services. So it would rescind that, but my advice is that this would then be, um, you, you would rescind two-point-zero-eight-point-oh-four-zero and replace it with this document. So the numbering would start again at two-point-zero-eight-point-oh-four-zero and go, go from there. So that's, I think that would be where it would be the best place to put this into county code.
Okay. Any of the other commissioners have anything that they'd like to add?
All right, we've gotten in there where with the one part, the purchase and the grants department, been taken out of there, so.
So you know what you're talking, does everybody pick one, one of these up? Do you have that? Anybody? If you can follow through, this is basically just a flow, flow chart of what this ordinance does. Um, I'd recommend you pick it up and, and read it and follow through, look at it, and, and so you can see how the data and the reports follow. The whole idea of this is, at the end of the day, that the payroll and, and the purchasing grants department, their report that comes to the commission, the warrant, and the report that comes from the clerk auditor, and the, the check register from the treasurer will match. If they don't match at the end of the day, then we know where we gotta go find the problem. It gives us three-legged stool that we're able to find any fraud that's going on, or if there is any. And a lot of times, it's just mistakes. And this way, we can fi, find the mistake and fix it before it, it continues on, so. It, it gives us a lot more, uh, information that, that we, that we need, so.
I think it's a tremendous tool, of sitting through the meetings out there, Mr. Chairman, and going through it with, uh, John Dugall and, uh, everybody that was involved, I think we're on the right track. They've had our final, they've had this, uh, out there and have found no problems with what we're doing, they've checked it over and, uh, went through the financial administration of it all, and thought it was, I think I've not seen any reports coming back and negative against it.
No, the last time I talked to them, um, they had one change that they asked us to make, and we made it, and other than that, I think we're good.
What I recall is when we were working on SB one sixty-two, one of the things we found out is how many of the other counties had a, a financial process ordinance. And in this particular case, would, what they did is they went right to, and as John read them, it's Utah Code annotated section seventeen thirty-six forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five, and it essentially lays out what you should be doing. Makes it very clear as to which roles belong where. And if you put them together, I think as you mentioned, when you look at these three under payroll and purchasing grants, clerk auditor and treasurer, the same information is going to show up in each one of them, where right now, um, we've kind of merged, right now, we've got a hybrid between payroll, purchasing grants, and the clerk auditor's office. Treasurer doesn't change hardly at all. Um, but it just clarifies the role, and the state auditor, as well as the legislature, were very clear when they put that into code as to how they thought that should be separated. And that's what this ordinance does for U N A County.
And we've been working with I T. They'll have the, the, uh, permissions changed how they need to be. They will have, uh, this program should be up and ready to run, and should issue all the reports and the, uh, the data, the way that it should flow, the same as this flow chart shows.
Yeah, my, my understanding, working with I T, is that they need some time to put this together. Now, typically, this ordinance would not be in full force and effect for fifteen days after approval. Um, the report pages have already started taking shape, their, I T's been working with the clerk auditor's office, been working with the purchasing, um, to be sure that we're able to provide what is anticipated here, so that we will make this, it, it will be easy at any given point to look at any record and see where it is and what has happened to it. Um, this is also why we are currently looking into, um, modification of our current I T, so that the program we're using, whether it's something new that is specific to a third-party software, or if there's something we can revamp, update, but we, we are definitely out of date with our system. So something can be done that would then allow this to be looked at. Um, to be honest with you, even as commissioners, we've had difficulty over the years finding numbers, um, costs associated with certain things. Expect under this particular, um, the, the way this is intended to work, the way it's designed to work, and the way, um, the products that will come out, you'll be able to go, any member of the public will be able to ask a very simple question and get a very straightforward answer, as will the commission. So?
Okay. What's that?
We have it at the end.
I will, it, we have it at the end of the meeting, you can save with everyone. Come up, Pam, and then you're next.
My memory fails me when this happened before, you passed an ordinance, and in that ordinance, I remember you outlined, I don't remember, because, da-da, 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 we're gonna do this. And I haven't read this, but as John was going through this, and he said something about because of the audit with Larson, whatever it was you said, we're going to do this. And it just, before, when this happened, and right now, it seems to me, making an ordinance is one thing, and just saying, we codify this to say this. But to say, because we're mad about the audit, or whatever it is, we're gonna do this, I just feel like it's not as professional to put in some reasoning that's a negative reasoning. I think it makes more sense for you just to say, we're codifying this, and we voted on it, and this is what it is. Does that make sense? From what you said, you're giving a reason for this, which I don't think is the correct way to write an ordinance. You don't say in another ordinance that the, we're gonna charge five dollars at the dump in an ordinance because five years ago, when it used to be a dollar, we couldn't make ends meet, and, does that make sense? You're, you're trying to state a reasoning for, and I just don't think that's right. And down the road, people fifteen years from now read that and say, what was this audit? Who's this company? Anyway, that just strikes me as odd as it did before, which, does anybody remember that other ordinance? That said, there was a reason, and it was like, that should not be part of a codified county ordinance. That's all. That wasn't a question, sorry, that was a statement.
Okay.
Tammy Meacham, Concerned Citizens. So this ordinance has been going through the commission meetings for weeks. You had a packed audience asking you not to do this ordinance, you had elected officials asking you not to do this ordinance, you had, I'm gonna grammar the meeting, you had people in the audience saying, no motion, and yet you, as county commissioners, do as you please. And I noticed on the flow chart, it doesn't have one thing about your budget officer, because in SB one sixty-two, the budget officer was struck from the comments. So why are you hiding that you're not gonna use the budget officer in your flow chart?
He has nothing to do with this.
Bart, in this ordinance, you had a packed meeting asking you not to do this. Your elected officials asked you not to do this. Public, people from the public asked you not to do this, and still the county commissioners do as they please. Instead of working for your employees, working for your elected officials, working for the public, you three do as you please.
Or it could be that we're following state code.
No, that was not.
Commissioners, may I make a comment?
Sure.
This is the first time I've seen your newest and latest draft. I have not had an opportunity to completely review it. I do request, I know John serves as legal counsel for the county, he has not even had an opportunity, from, from what he just told us, to even review this very much at all, to see that it actually is complying with code. To me, it's pretty simple. In the new code, it states what the accounting services mean, creation, modification, and deletion of transactions. I have not had an opportunity to read this, but my brief two minutes reading it back there, in my opinion, which you always pointed out to me the other day, I don't have a lit, law degree, but I feel like the county auditor needs to have some representation in this, because right now, our attorney's office is representing the county commissioners and not the auditor's office or the other elected officials in this business.
Just a correction on that.
I don't think so.
The county attorney's office represents the county.
Okay. Then I would hope that-
We represent the county.
Okay. I feel like at this point-
Disagreement with that can be brought to me directly or to Jamin Thomas.
That's what I'm bringing out, is I feel like right now, since I just barely received a copy of this, that I question if John's even had time to review this, to see that it meets the code. I haven't reviewed it till just barely, and so I'm questioning whether this, because I haven't had a chance to read it, so I'd request that you postpone this, at least for a week, till the other elected officials, meaning me as the finance officer duly elected by the public to do this job, had an opportunity to review this, because this is not the one you sent out three, four weeks ago that was shared with me in col, in cooperation to cooperate and talk. This is the first time that I've seen the new and revised, greatest, whatever you want to call this. So I, questioning if it's following the code, I don't know, because I haven't had a ti, opportunity to review this. And since Bart, since you claim you read this, or you wrote this ordinance, what part of that line don't you understand, is where I'm at there? The creation, modification, deletion of entries in the county financial system.
I never claimed that I wrote this. I claimed that I was at every, every meeting.
Okay.
If you want to have a discussion, I was at every meeting at the state level. Was you there? No.
Was we invited or just you?
No, you wasn't.
I wasn't invited, was I?
Mike, you want to know why you wasn't invited? Do you want to, you want to go here?
No, I'm, I made my comments.
Let's, let's read, let's, let's read the audit from the state auditor about the clerk auditor that we have, should we? Do you want to go there, Mike?
It's already out there. It's out there for the public to view.
If there's any more outbreaks out in the audience, public comment's over.
So I made my comment on this.
Okay.
And I would propose that we request that it be postponed and tell-
We have been dealing with this by state statute, we are supposed to send it out to you and the treasurer and get comments back, and we did.
And replied, and then you revised again and never sent it out again.
We revised it off of all the comments that we received. John, does it meet, have you, you've been involved with writing and helping put this together? Does this meet the qualifications, the statutes that we need to follow, state code?
So after the last public meeting, I need to just get the sequence of events. The last public meeting, there was a draft that was submitted to the county attorney's office. We added statutory references to each of the paragraphs that there were statutory references for, and then sent that back to the commission. And then this morning, I received this draft and was asked to put whereas clauses in. So that's, so are the statutory references correct? Yeah, as long as they haven't been modified, then yes, those statutory references are correct.
Okay.
That was, that was the last involvement from the county attorney's office.
Okay. Wendy?
Wendy Long, treasurer, may I make a comment or ask a couple of questions? Um, first of all, I'd, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. You mentioned that the state auditor, you had been in contact with him, have they seen this new draft?
Yes.
Have they seen this flow chart?
Yes.
Because we have not. As other elected officials, this is the first time that we have seen this. We saw the first ordinance, we, the first draft, we met with you, we told you what our concerns were, we never heard anything back since, until we have just received this ordinance just now. So we have not had a chance to review it, we haven't had a chance to see what changes have been made, if any. You say that there are, but we haven't even had a chance to review that. I have one other question. On this flow chart, because to me, this is very confusing, and I think this blurs the lines of what the clerk auditor's duties are, what, um, what a department has to do to get an invoice paid. We get people in our office all the time saying, where do I take my invoice? Do I take it over there? Do I take it down here? Do I? To me, this blurs the lines and it's not very clear. And to me, the, the code, SB one sixty-two, made it very clear what, how that should transpire. My question is on this, I don't see anywhere, who is responsible for inputting the invoices into the computer?
Right there on the clerk auditor, says right there.
So the clerk auditor will input all of the invoices into the computer, is that correct?
Yeah.
Not the purchasing department?
Exactly.
The clerk auditor will be inputting the invoices, is that correct?
Yeah, he has a couple ways he can do it. He'll have his, it'll be his choice how he wants to do it.
Okay. That was, that was my question, I just, I, again, and this has been brought up time and time again, is the lack of communication between the commission and the other elected officials as to what's going on. This affects our job every single day, and we haven't had that communication. You're gonna do what you want anyway, regardless of what we say, because we have asked you in meeting after meeting after meeting that we've had on this, to listen to our concerns, and we don't feel like we have been heard. So, and, and like I said, this is the first time we've had a chance to look at this, I would hope that you'll give us a chance to at least look at it and make comment.
I will say this, as we have had, we, we followed this-
This affects our job every single day, and we haven't had that communication. You're gonna do what you want anyway, regardless of what we say, because we have asked you in meeting after meeting after meeting that we've had on this, to listen to our concerns, and we don't feel like we have been heard. So... And like I said, this is the first time we've had a chance to look at this. I would hope that you'll give us a chance to at least look at it and make comment.
I will say this. As we have had... We followed this state code. We sent it out to the two in our... In the county that... And got your comments. And then we've been working on it. Like you've said, it's been on the agenda for a month now. We actually had a public... A special meeting about this. It's not like it hasn't been out to the public and haven't had time to take your comments. We took your comments from the special meeting we had to put this together. This does not just have to do with Senate Bill 162. There's other portions of the state code that this deals with. But I will say this. Senate Bill 162, the elected from UAC, which is a group that represents the whole state of... And the... I guess it would be their representation of the clerk auditor's office. There was two of them there. The clerk auditor from Davis County and the clerk auditor from Weaver County. Myself was... I was there every time. Commissioner Stringer came out a few times. This was ran back and forth many times with the state auditor and with...
UAC.
What's that?
With UAC representation.
Yeah, with UAC representation and lobbyists to come up with this bill to make it what it is. And this flow sheet, I don't know how it could get any... I guess I'll walk through it real quick. On the payroll side, time cards are turned into the payroll department. The payroll department puts all the stuff together, puts all the information that needs done. The report goes with the data, goes into the clerk auditor's office, so he can audit it and make sure that payroll and everything was done correctly. A payroll report will go down to the purchasing grants department, so they can encumber the money for that. So we don't run into the problems that we have with the 450 not being paid, going six months behind schedule. We don't have the 401K that was paid out, that we have a claim against the county for now. All these things will be brought to the attention, and the money will be encumbered line by line, and so we have it. And then the commission will get that report of all the money that's been encumbered. As soon as they've encumbered all the money and the POs and everything are done, then all the data from the purchasing grants department and the payroll department will go into the clerk auditor's office. At that time, they'll be able to audit it. They'll be able to look at all the work that has been done. If they agree with the work that's been done, they can use that information to put in their computer, or they can create their whole system, however they'd like to do it. Doesn't matter to us. As long as, at the end of the day... At the end of the day, that that report, that incumbents' report, and the warrant list matches. And that report will come to the commission. And then, the clerk auditor will send that data and report to the treasurer. The treasurer will print the checks, as long as we have the money, and then we'll get a check register. Now we have a report from the purchasing grant department that encumbered all the money. We have a report from the clerk auditor, the warrant list, whatever you wanna call it, coming from him, and the treasurer check run. Those should match. If they don't, we have a problem. And now we have a mechanism in place that'll catch anything that's going on. We won't have checks written without it going through the right process. This is how that's... That's how it's supposed to work. That's how we agreed upon it out at the state level. It was a bill that was dividing the state. There's a lot of counties that wanted different ways to do it, different processes. We was able to bring the whole state together, come up with what we needed, and go from there. And I will state this. Just because they took the budget officer's name out of the state code does not mean that it's an illegal name to use. You can use budget officer. We talk about budget officer all the time. It's not illegal to use it, it's just not in that code. We have a budget officer, because it saved us millions of dollars, it's identified many areas that we needed to improve on, and it saved us millions of dollars.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You know, it's... We stand up here and sit up here, and we keep our... We keep quiet pretty well. We try to be respectful. The whole purpose of this is to keep our clerk auditor from falsifying documents that cost the taxpayers of UNA County over $2 million, and we got a $2 million claim, 'cause in my opinion, he stole the money from the citizens of UNA County. Bottom line, if we didn't need this stuff, would not happen, because we had an honest and an upfront, and somebody had to read the state's auditor's thing here. The county clerk auditor lacks the requisite skills, knowledge, and expertise necessary to oversee the preparation of the county financial report.
My advice is gonna be the same for all. You're welcome to speak opinions, but if we can please keep it professional. It's the same advice I'm giving to all elected officials.
Well, I apologize for the outbreak there. I am... You know, we've sat up here and been quiet, and to take this, if we had it was... This stuff was not falsified and hid from the taxpayers of the UNA County, and it's gonna cost us over $4 million to settle this. It's already cost us over $2 million from falsifying. This will hopefully stop this from going forward.
It will stop it, so...
Thank you for that being on the recording, 'cause that's what I needed.
Been on recording several times.
I'm just... At this point in time, this is, I think, in response to both Wendy's comments and questions, Mike's, and others. I would like, for a moment, to just... There is too much personal investment in some of what has been going on for a long time. And it doesn't mean that it was all wrong. It certainly wasn't all right. But what I would... What I really encourage you to do is to remove yourself from the personalities. And when you look at this, if you were running your own home budget, if you were running a budget for somebody, maybe it's at the church, maybe it's somewhere else, and don't think about the people involved or where it came from, just see if it works. I think when you look at it, you see, these are where the bills come in. This is where a payment is developed. This is where an obligation comes from. This is the person, the clerk auditor, the financial officer, not the financial planner, not the financial reconciler, but the officer. And that officer looks at that and says, "This looks like it's followed the proper process." Not do the process themselves, but audit, actually audit where that bill came from, what it is, what it's for. And then, when they say, "Yes, that is fine, that should be paid," then it's sent to the treasurer. That's what I do, hopefully, that's what you all do in a micro way, when you get your bill from Utah Power, Rocky Mountain Power, and you look at it and go, "Oh, that doesn't look right. That doesn't look right at all. It looks like I've been running five households." Or, "It looks right. I'm sending this on to the person who writes the check." So somewhere along the line, don't you... Isn't there some kind of separation, or do you just automatically pay anything that comes in? Sometimes you pay without even receiving something. This is all documented. Again, take personalities out of it, because, quite honestly, things were working, things were running, but they weren't running according to the law. They were getting by, but they weren't proper. There was never any time when there was a complete separation between the purchasing and the auditing. It just wasn't happening. Even if you say, "Well, I've got one person doing it here in my office," it's under the same supervisor, so it's not a legitimate audit. So what we've gotta do is just take a look at the workflow process and decide on it. Don't think about what's been done or what you think ought to be done, just think, "Does this work or not?" That's what we think. That's why it's here. It's nothing to do with anything else, other than, "This seems to produce a product that we and you can actually get information from." Period. That's all I've got for that.
Okay. I'll put it up for motion. If anybody wants to make a motion, we will. If not...
Commissioners, I did notice one thing that I was reading through, 'cause there was a one sentence on page two. It's the third to last paragraph. It's a standalone sentence, but it was a question that I had, where we need to insert provisions of 172412 to codify the frequency of this report, which is distinct from the dual report required under paragraph F below. So that sentence needs to be taken out, because that's a comment, not a...
Okay.
Not an actual procedure. Because there is, under state code 172412, that's where the county treasurer, which Wendy has done, she's brought the treasurer report to the county commission, and it's codifying that's the third Monday of each month. But then, the other procedure of the dual report, which looks like now it's in E, that's 1719A208, where the county auditor and county treasurer shall make an annual joint report to the county commission, accounting for the financial condition of the county on the third Monday of July. So those are two separate reports.
Yeah.
But my comment was still in here, so that needs to be deleted.
Well, and as you mentioned, John, on the whereas', on the very first one, there's a whereas', whereas'. I think we only need one.
Yep.
Any further comments?
You could've taken the closer one.
I'll take one more public comment.
After me?
No, just you.
Oh, thank you very much. Dan Dillsaber. So, it appears to me that you guys are in charge with, you know, trying to keep up some compliance with the state auditor's office. And I'm kinda lazy, so I don't like to reinvent the wheel. You're not reinventing the wheel here. There are other counties that are also struggling with this process, and this is something that you've adopted from... With help from the John Dougal's office, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I think everybody here probably loves it when you get their phone update, it was working great, now they updated it, so it's gonna be a mess. I think we're all resistant to change, and I think that's kinda what's going on there a little bit. So if you can assure me that you haven't reinvented the wheel, and this isn't... How many counties are there in the state?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
We're not the only one doing this?
No.
This is something that other counties are also doing? So there's no animus in what you're trying to do here? So, if you think it's better for us, and it's easier for us to understand, then I think you're doing the right thing. Thank you.
We actually got the idea from one of the other counties. They couldn't believe we didn't have one.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
We don't take questions. We do comment.
I do comment.
One more, and then we're gonna go move forward.
I got some comment about some things that were said regarding this, but also, it goes back to the last county commission meeting we held, and I talked with you. And Commissioner Stringham made some comments regarding audit, and we've talked a lot about audit here. He made some comments about you can't tell who the admin was on some changes, changes to the program, who rewrote it. As an auditor myself, those are concerning, but even maybe more concerning to that was... I love to see movements within a program. For instance, an entry of 101, 102 reversal, those kinds of things, you love to see that as an auditor, 'cause you know people are paying attention, and they're catching mistakes, and they're working on it. But he made the comment, "You can't see who made changes or what changes was made." Those are extremely, extremely concerning. So, maybe if you could expound on that just a tiny bit, but if those... These are... Would be variances in audit that would be huge, and things that would have to really be looked at. So concerning the program, has the state given you any direction on maybe updating your computer system or those things that carry these? And then relating to today, he made... Commissioner Stringer again made the comment regarding this. Can we rewrite the program, the current system, or a new system? So, as a citizen, I would say, before you enact this, if you're still looking at another program, before you spend the money to rewrite this one, or make... Or whatever you're gonna do, make the decision on what you're gonna do on a computer program first, instead of doing it twice and spending the money twice to do it. But I'd also like to know if the state's given you any direction on a computer program or what you should do there. And that would answer a lot of questions, whether you should move forward today or wait. Thank you.
Do you want me to answer some of that, or not?
Go ahead.
Number one, that we would dearly love to have the state come out with standardization. We've talked in IT a fair amount about why it's a pain to have all the different systems that there are. The assessors have adopted Puma, I think statewide. It makes it better for everyone involved if every county's using the same software to track the same kind of information. I think we should undertake a lobbying effort to have certain standards. Now, the state, of course, doesn't wanna get in our business unless it's to get into our money, but I would like very much for them to standardize some of the programs that we use. I think that would be a benefit. We have it, and we do it in law enforcement, we do it in the legal side. There are some standardizations, but not everywhere else. With respect to the system versus today's ordinance, the two have no relationship to each other. So that was, I don't know... I can't answer that one.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You know, John, if we go through this, what I've seen in the past with ordinance and resolutions, pretty hard to get them perfect the first time, no matter what. Seems like we catch some things. But in your opinion, you've read through it there, can you see anything that's really outstanding that's saying, "Hold on, wait a little bit, wait a moment"?
Technical deficiencies, deficiencies of substance.
So, I'll just offer an opinion on the legal standard, that it does meet statutory legal requirements or discretion that the state legislature has given to county commissions. So in that regard, the ordinance is sound, because it's citing specific statutes that authorize or require certain action to take place. As far as the policy side goes, my office stays neutral on the policy side. As we have throughout the past two years, our office has taken steps to change the warrant reporting and enabled and emboldened the county auditor and the county treasurer to make payments, as they are allowed to do, and only provide a report back to the county commission, because that was unnecessary and actually unlawful for the county commission to be authorizing those expenditures, 'cause the state statute says that after the county auditor reviews it, sends it to the county treasurer, the county treasurer has the full authority to make those payments. So it was improper to seek, or the county commission to try and exercise authority over those treasurer's actions. So the whole time, our office has tried to embolden all offices of the county, to make sure that they're all taking care of their statutory responsibilities, that they understand the audits that can be reported, that can be done, they understand when payment can be made, that they don't need to seek county commission authority on it, and the county commission is, under state statute, able to adopt a financial ordinance. How that's done, my office will stay neutral. We're not going to dive into policy. So I don't know if that completely answers your question, but I just wanted to make sure the role then of the county attorney's office is also clear, that we don't set policy on behalf of the county. We advise on legal standards.
Well, with that, I'll put it up for motion.
I'll make a attempt at it, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to accept the ordinance number 0606-202101, Financial Administration.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, zero-one, with the caveat of the... What John had mentioned earlier, that we needed to modify. I think it was in the whereas', John?
When... Sorry. The third to last sentence on page two just needs to be taken out, because that was a comment, not a... was a comment, not a, not ordinance language.
Okay. That is my motion.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Yes.
That the motion, that it would resend current two point zero eight point zero four zero in county code, and insert this in its place.
That is my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Resend which part, John? I'm sorry?
Two point zero eight point zero four zero. Just for comment, that's the current accounting services ordinance, which under Senate Bill one sixty-two needs to be, needs to be rescended.
Yes.
Okay.
So this resends and replaces. Okay, I think that, I think it covered, I think that motion covered everything, so second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? See and none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is Moonshine Arch Road, classification change, class B road While you're setting this up, I'll just tee it up a little bit. The county has been working with the state on the Moonshine Arch Road. The state came in and they wanted to make a different exit, and so it wasn't right on the corner. So with that, the old road that's up here, and Matt, I'll turn it over to you, I was just trying to fill some quiet space.
Yeah, so I'm kind of filling in for Scott today. He wasn't able to, to be here, he's out doing some work, but, so this is just a map of the area. The, the current road to Moonshine Arch comes in, this black and white dashed line is the State Highway one ninety-one, and it comes off right here on this corner, and heads up north, and then where this red road picks up, heads east and west kind of over to the parking lot, represented by this orange square here. The new alignment, and this is approximate, I didn't have time to get exactly where it is, but it's going to come in further north on one ninety-one, it's going to come in at more of a right angle, in an area where you can see both directions clearly. And then it's going to come up and tie in right here at this intersection. And from this intersection here to the highway, there's a sixty-foot right-of-way, and there'll be a thirty-foot travel surface put in there, both for motor vehicle travel and other types of travel, whether it's walking or biking. And then from, from this intersection on, the existing class D road that's already there will be improved. And the road department is still in kind of a review stage to see what right-of-ways are there, what we have, and what improvements will be made to that, that section of the road. I do know that the county does have a right-of-way, I believe it's thirty-six feet, from this location north, and then to the west, to this property line, that we received from the property owner when we realigned that road. That was probably three or four years ago, it seems like. So there is a, a right-of-way there, and then we go into some BLM land, which we're just going to have to look and see what, what's there, and what the county claims, and then see what improvements can be done there. And then it comes back to private again. I believe through this BLM and through the private, I don't think that there is a recorded right-of-way, to my knowledge. So that'll have to be looked at to see what improvements can be done to those sections. But the plan is to improve the whole road. It may not be the exact same all the way through, because it's all going to depend on what right-of-ways are there, and how the, those improvements could be made, so. I think that's the basic information I got from Scott.
Okay. Yeah, we're just looking at it. So it's going to have to be a maintained road, as, as busy as that Moonshine Arch area is now, and so if we switch to a B road, then we can, we can use B road money to maintain it, so.
Yeah, and talking to Scott, he said it would, is going to be put on their maintenance schedule, and going to be a maintained county road, so.
Okay.
One other thing, just to clarify the process, depending on what happens today with it, if there's a decision to make that change, then that change would be given to our GS, our GIS department and the attorney's office, and they will come up with an ordinance to make a map, transportation, I'm trying to remember the official name, transportation plan.
We usually, we usually do the classification, I think by resolution, to change the classification of a road. And so that would need to come back too. Yeah, once we get all of the exact location, everything like that, will be put into a resolution, and it can come to commission meeting.
And then that'll officially change the map, right?
That's when it'll go on the class B road list to UDOT, and then we can start getting funding on it.
Okay.
Maybe explain the purple area down there a little bit, just a little, give them a little.
Yeah, so this area, this is the parking area, the orange area is the improved parking area that was done last year, or the year before. And that was a, a project that was a grant, and it was through, I believe through UDOT. And then the county has entered into a purchase agreement for the two acres south of that, for future expansion of the parking area, or other needs out there, whatever they might be, you know, restroom facilities, or trash facilities, or whatever it might be. And that, that is in the process, that purchase agreement is in the process of being completed at this point.
Okay.
Can, can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
If proper at this time. One is just for the record, we are going to be designating this as a class B gravel, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
On that, okay. Because that also changes on, we have to identify what type of road it is, and that will influence how much money comes back from the state. And then the other question I have, so the Moonshine Arch Road where it currently is, I don't know if Matt, if you can put your arrow on that, where it comes off of one ninety-one?
Sure, so it's here.
Okay, so that road is going to remain open, because it provides access to a, a couple of those properties. So the question I have, it will stay as a class D road, is my understanding, are we going to have proper signage that will then direct the public, so they know where to access Moonshine Arch, they'll know where to go?
Yeah.
So we better eliminate this, the safety hazard that's right there on the corner?
My understanding is part of the DOT project.
Okay.
On the widening. They're putting a, a whole passing lane, or a turn lane on both sides, coming in both directions.
And then we'll have those signs, probably like those dinosaur signs that we have.
Yeah, there's already wayfinding signs down by this intersection, those will be moved up, up the road.
Okay.
And yeah, sorry, I forgot to bring that up, but UDOT is, they're putting in a right and left turn lane.
Yeah.
At that intersection too, so.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're moving dirt right now, so. Okay, those are my only questions.
Okay. So until we have a resolution, can we just?
I think right now, just we thank Cazier's office for the information, and it could be just, yes, let's proceed.
Okay.
Because the official action will be when it comes through on that resolution.
Okay. Sounds good, all right. Thanks, Matt.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the budget, the twenty twenty-two budget amendment increase.
Commissioners, I have for your consideration today a budget amendment and increase, the twenty twenty-two Yuna County budget. So I'll just, I'll present, I'll present this, and then you can open it up for public comment if you desire. First of all, there's a proposed adjustment to Fund Ten for the Cork Auditor's Office. Salaries will be increased by seventy thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars, payroll taxes five thousand six hundred, employee benefits forty-seven thousand. In the original twenty twenty-two budget that was passed, it was anticipated that a couple positions may be transferred out of the Cork's office, and so those funds weren't budgeted at that time. And at this point, it looks, they've hired a new employee, that, and there's some adjustments that need to be made to that office, so this takes care of those adjustments. The general miscellaneous fund, the line special expenditures will be decreased by one hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty, the expenditure line. In the general fund transfers department, there'll be a transfer of debt, to debt service fund of seven million dollars, and the revenue sources for all these will be fund balance of seven million. The general property taxes will be decreased by one million eight hundred thousand. The general sales tax will be increased by one million, and the sales tax will be increased by eight hundred thousand. That covers the general fund. In Fund Twenty-five, which is set up for the ARPA funds, this is the money that came from the federal government, we're going to budget expenditures of three million four seventy, four fifty-five, and a like amount of revenue. We received last, in May of twenty twenty-one, we received the first installment of that money, and we received three million four hundred and seventy thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars, I believe, which was already budgeted at the beginning of the year. This will be the second installment, which is the last installment, which we should be receiving any time now. Total is about six point nine million dollars of ARPA money that we will have received. In Fund Thirty, that's the debt service fund, in the, there's a principal payment budgeted for twenty-four million ninety-five thousand dollars. The revenue source will be seven million dollars from the general fund, six point six million from the MBA fund, eleven point eight five million from the Capital Projects Fund. The current property taxes in that fund, the revenue will be decreased by two point four million, and a use of fund balance of one million forty-five thousand. That will be adequate amount of money set aside to defees the general obligation bonds, if you desire. In Fund Forty-three, municipal building authority, there's a transfer scheduled, budgeted for six point six million dollars, that will come out of fund balance. In Fund Forty-six, Capital Projects Funds, there's a transfer to debt service fund for eleven million eight, eleven million eight hundred and fifty thousand, and that will come out of the fund balance of eleven, eleven million eight hundred and fifty thousand. That's the, that's the budget adjustment amendment and increase for your consideration.
Okay. Okay, we are in a public hearing, so I'd entertain public comment. Actually, before I do that, let me see, do you have any comment that you would like to?
No.
Go ahead.
Commissioners, Wendy Long, Yuna County Treasurer. I just have a few talking points that I'd like to bring up regarding paying off this geo bond debt. We met with Zion's Bank Public Finance a week or so ago regarding this. It was very apparent in that meeting that they strongly discouraged the paying off of this geo bond debt. We were all in the meeting, the commissioners were there, myself, Mike Wilkins, Zion's Public Finance, who, I think they know what they're talking about. And so I'd like to bring up a couple of points that they brought up, for the very reason that this is not a good idea. While eliminating the county debt sounds all warm and fuzzy to the voters, but the reality is, paying off all the county debt will take away all of our reserves. You will not be the ones paying off the debt. It's all the money that has been saved and managed well for the last thirty or forty years, that were frugal and fiscally responsible to set that money aside. The geo bond debt right now is at two point six percent. These bonds are not callable for at least four years. So even if you could buy them from the current investors, which is highly unlikely, you will be depleting all of the county reserves. So if the library needs a new roof, or the public safety complex might need a, a new air conditioning unit, whatever, whatever might come along, there are no reserves left to pay those bills. You won't be able to go to the CIB for funding, because they will look at us and say, you don't need our money, you're out of debt. And if you try to borrow the money, you will pay much more than the current rate that we are paying now. These are all comments that were made by Public, Zion's Bank Public Finance. There are also other fees that are associated with this, so it sounds really, really appealing that we're going to pay off this high interest debt with, but there's attorney fees, there's bond attorney fees, there's brokerage fees. And again, if you try to borrow that money back, if you can, if you need something, and you try to borrow that money back, you're going to be paying at least twice the amount of interest that we're paying right now on the public safety complex. The PTIF interest right now is making point seven nine. So on the surface, it looks really good. We're going to take that money, and we're going to pay off a two point five percent loan, but it's not fiscally responsible, it's not as simple as it appears. There are a lot of moving parts, and there are other issues to consider. One thing that they said in that meeting that really struck me, they said cash is key. Cash is key. We need to keep those monies in our reserves, because if you don't, you will force a future commission to go through a tax increase, it's as simple as that. I just, in closing, stay the course, that loan will be paid off in twenty thirty-four, stay the course, you'll have the reserves on hand when you need them.
I'd like to echo what Treasurer Wendy Long said about that. Also, I want to make aware to the public, the six point six million will be pulling out of the municipal building authority, is money that you all set aside a few years ago, to build up a reserve to pay off all the other loans. So you're just moving one loan to another loan, so just, because that's kind of a smoke and mirror thing right there. And I thought it was very interesting that you added my budget increase on here, on this particular one, and I still question that that's enough to even cover what needs to be covered in my budget on that one. I am, I am the finance officer for Yuna County, who now is over the budget. You guys are over the budget, it's your budget.
That's right.
But this budget was not presented out to the public in a seven-day manner, as it should have been, for people to look at and review. So just making comments there, ARPA funds, I think that's great, paying off debt, I believe Mr. Drawlinger made a comment a while back, few meetings ago, few months, years ago now, right now with inflation going the way it is, not a good idea to get rid of two point six percent interest loan.
I just had a question, if they could, if we could get a brief description of what some of these things are for? I know it says what funds they're coming out of, but if we could get a brief description of what, especially on the general sales tax, under the, I guess it's the third, second item? The debt service fund, seven million, and then it goes down through the general sales and use tax, the one million, and sales tax, does that mean you're just pulling out of those funds to, it says revenue? So I'm not sure if you're increasing the sales tax rate, or I, I don't understand what that means. And also, down under the debt service fund, that principal payment, if you would just tell us what that pays, or what that's for? Also on the backside, Fund Forty-three, the municipal building authority, that transfer to debt service fund, if you could tell us what that was for? And the Fund Forty- And the Fund 46, Capital Projects, transfer of the 11.85 million. That's all I needed, thank you.
Mark, do you want to hit some of that?
The increase of the sales tax is that, we project what sales tax revenue will be. So the projections are coming in greater, we talked about this about two or three weeks ago and presented the sales tax projections, they're coming in greater than we anticipated. So that will be an increase to the revenue side for sales tax. The money being transferred from the MBA and the Capital Project, that money's being transferred to the Debt Service Fund to enable to pay, to pay off the GO bonds. Fund 30 is where the GO bonds are at, yes. And as far as the meeting being properly noticed, it's a five day notice in the Vernal Express. It's required, it's required to be on the public notice website and the, and the county's website, which they were all done. Becky posted the two of them on public notice and, and the website here. I posted it on the paper probably two weeks ago.
Why, Mark, why you're right there. The 2.4 million, is that what's on the property tax now to pay the GO bond, is that?
Yeah, currently, there's a $2.4 million payment on the debts, GO bond, which is the principal and interest. 1.52 million is principal, the rest is interest. And currently, it's scheduled to be charged, the revenue is going to be from property taxes. But with this transfer, that won't have to happen, we won't have to have a property tax charge. It'll just be paid from the funds we already have.
Okay.
One more comment, Commissioner. The sales tax was under budgeted. The, this does include a $1.8 million tax decrease, I think that's very good for you, for your running of your political campaign. Also on this, when you're saying fund balance, $1,045,000, he hasn't taken into consideration, we've already made a $600,000 interest payment on that loan, that he will be short in this.
The interest payment on the debt was not 600, it was about 473,000, and I did take that into consideration. There's two payments for the year, one in June and one in December, come up to about 950.
Any other public comment?
Sorry, Mark, did you mean then Fund 30, Fund 43, and Fund 46, that's all to pay off the GO bond? Is that the way I understand that?
Yes.
Yes, those were, okay. And when you said the general property tax, the current, and you said you've got it under revenues as a negative, or 18, 1.8 million, that means you're reducing property taxes? Do you have to do that through a rate change, or how does that work?
It's just a budget amendment, and the budget drives the certified tax rate. So when this, when the tax rates are determined, the budget is what is sourced for determining what taxes are charged.
My memory fails me. Steve had mentioned earlier what the anticipated revenues from the federal and the state incarcerated inmates here. If somebody could refresh my memory, I would appreciate it, thank you.
Depends on the numbers and what the actual rate that we negotiate at. But if it's based off of the state rate for 48 inmates, it's just over $1 million, almost 1.1.
Any other public comment? Jim? Pam? Pam, Jim's on his way up, then you can go. Everybody keeps cutting him off.
Commissioners, this is an exciting day to me. We've been working towards this goal for a very...
Could you state your name, please, for the record?
Who, who's talking to me?
Me. Can you state your name for the record, please?
My name is James G. Drollinger. I'm a retired certified public accountant and a taxpayer. And those of you in the public office, we've had issues for four years trying to solve some very interesting circumstances that exist. Today, and so it's been four or five years now, having the mic, pretty close. It's, it's taken a long time. But Commissioners, thank you from my, from my standpoint. I think the taxpayers thank you greatly. I've got a couple of questions. How much money will the county have in its coffers if that is paid off? And here just comes slide right, okay.
At, is this on? At January 1 of 2022, the beginning of this year, the county had $102 million between restricted and non-restricted funds.
Okay.
So this will take 25, 26 million, and you'll still have the remainder in the, in the county fund. So we won't be at zero like has, has been stated.
And that doesn't count 20, or 2022's income yet, does it?
That's correct, we'll still have income coming in. And we've been running surpluses every year in the budget, so that could still be the case.
Thank you. Stay right there, because I might have more questions. Mike, you made a comment that I said some years ago, something about inflation. So let's, let's quote that accurately at least. Inflation is a killer of any entity, including people, that have cash. Couple of things I heard today, coal doubled this year, the price of coal. If any of you pay attention to oil, and we all should because we're in UNA County, for heaven's sake, oil hit 118 today. So if you have an entity, and I don't care if it's a business, a government entity, I don't care what it is. And the, the accepted inflation factor is 10 right now. So if this county wants to hold on to 100 million, what does it lose in buying power per year? Any takers? 10 million. So we bring money in from the taxpayer, set it in the county coffers, it gets points less than 1%, and it loses buying power of 10, and this is good business? Now, I, I don't want to get cross-wired with Wendy, we're cross-wired enough. But when I take advice from a bank that's holding my money and telling me where to invest it, and that I shouldn't take it out of there, I would like to know from you, Wendy, what their fees are.
First of all, Zion's Bank isn't holding that money, it's being held by investors. We called Zion's Bank in to give us financial advice because they know a lot more about it than you or me.
Do they get a commission? You pay them for that advice. That's called conflict of interest. And I may have quite, I know, I may know quite a bit about that, actually.
And you might, and that's fine. I'm still saying that cash is key. Do not take all of your reserves and pay off this debt. And another thing about the 101 million, those are restricted funds. Much of that is restricted funds. So if you want to talk about how much is freed up to go and do things like this, then you need a different set of figures because those are restricted funds. You can't just go willy-nilly pay off anything you want.
Let's watch.
It's my advice to the county, as a county treasurer, not to pay off this debt and to keep the money in our reserves for when we need emergencies in the county, which we will. County government is here to provide services for its citizens, okay? So property taxes are not all a bad thing. They're here to provide services for people that can't provide it for themselves. A library, a public safety complex to keep bad guys off the streets.
What do you want to build next? What have you got on the agenda to build?
What's, what's your next project?
Hold on, hold on. The proper decorum for public comment is to engage the body whose meeting this is. If the body then wants to allow a back and forth from individuals, they can do that. But I advise not having cross discussions that aren't involving the actual body who's holding the public hearing.
So I'll finish my comment. Just so we all understand, the revenue of a county comes from what? Property tax, sales tax, grants, all the other stuff. In a highly inflationary timeframe, does sales tax go up? Mike, does sales tax go up when you sell things for double? Yes, they do. Does that indicate that the county's going broke? No. Barbara, you're going to get down there on that little computer and you're going to say, oh, oh, property values have gone up. We're going to raise property tax. Taxes are the greatest building cover of increased costs for governmental agency ever created. This is not like this county is going broke, don't even think that. And, and to, to let inflation kill the taxpayers' hard-earned dollars that you're holding in your banks, they don't have anymore, you took it from them. They should be given, my suggestion is, I'd like to see you guys help the taxpayers. And this time, it's a horrible time for older people with inflation, it's horrible. And maybe you could find it in your hearts to cut it back a little bit, give them a chance, thank you.
Thank you. Pam, you was next.
Never mind.
Dave?
Dave Shivers. They, I'm not going to repeat a lot of the things that's already been said, other than I feel like I'm in a school board meeting, because we've had these same discussions there. We've paid off some of ours. Our next one that we can pay off will, will be next February, and we'll be having this same discussion. I encourage the county commissioners to use the tax money that they have to pay off our debt. And hopefully, we can convince the school board, which the county commissioners get blamed for our tax levies because it's paid here. But hopefully, the school board will continue to vote to do the, do the same things. And we don't need these kind of reserves setting in reserve accounts for the school board or UNA County. So I'd encourage you to pay off what debt you can, thank you.
Tammy?
Tammy Mekum, UNA County citizen. So an election is in three weeks. You guys have had four years to pay off county debt. You've had four years to decrease property taxes, why now? It's on Bart's campaign page that he is going to pay off county debt and that he is going to lower property taxes. So you've had four years to do this for UNA County, for the citizens, for debt. Why now?
I would like to respond to that one. Yeah, let's see. Since I've been in office, every year we've paid some debt off. Every year, we have, we have lowered the, the amount of money that we've received from property tax. So why now? I've been working on it the whole time. And to get yourself in financial position to do this, if you look back, the year before I came in is when, was it 2018? The amount of money that was in the restricted accounts, all the accounts that we're talking about, was depleted from building the conference center. Down to about, what was it, 87, 88 million? Even with us paying off the debt that we have paid off, we've still, in the last three years, it's came up to 102 million, and it's actually closer to 105, I think now. And so we're collecting too much taxpayer money. It's not a new thing, we've been doing this for the total time. Every year, we have the same discussion. They, the, the side that understands interest wants to cut taxes. And those that don't understand interest wants to accept a certified tax rate and charge everything we can. This isn't something new, this is something we've worked on the whole time. It's been on my campaign page the last time and this time, that I will cut taxes and I will lower the amount of money that we have in the coffers of the county. There is no reason that we hold on to $103 million of taxpayer money. Put it in your pocket so you can use it. Any other comments?
Gaius Davison, a concerned citizen that showed up today because I heard through the vine that these kind of discussions would be taking place. Just want to comment, from my years of life and the wisdom that I have, what I see here is sound decision-making as far as this budget goes. I see a lot of anger. I see a lot of division in our county governor, government, which saddens me. Usually when somebody's angry, from my experience, they're potentially guilty of something. I just think that paying off debt is sound decision. And with inflation, the point's been made that the money's worth less and less. And, you know, property values are going to go up, so we're going to make more money on property tax anyway. So anyway, I just wanted to make those comments. That I'm kind of appalled at the, at the back and forth anger that I see here. It's just, it's, it's just not right. I don't know why we can't work together. There's answers for, for problems. And if, if, if these problems aren't answered, then, and taken care of, then there's going to be anger and division. Problems need to be taken care of. That's all I had to say, thank you.
Wayne, I think he was next.
Wayne Semper, concerned citizen. Just had a question. On the unrestricted funds we have left, Wendy said it would be zero. You're saying there's going to be quite a bit left. Can somebody give us a number of what that unrestricted funds number would be left in accounts afterwards? And then I just echo all the other comments about the inflation. I think the purpose of this is to enable Sheriff Labrum to be able to put more inmates in our jail. If we're going to generate a million dollars worth of revenue through our jail system by paying this debt off, plus save the money on the interest, plus gain the money that we're going to get for the inflation, I don't see why this would be a, it's a no-brainer to me. And also give back the taxpayers money. So we need to give the taxpayers back their money, thanks.
Just a, these are estimated funds. But on the general fund right now, if we take 7 million out, we'll still have $9 million in the general fund. What's the other one, that was the restricted account? Let me see if I have that number here. Wasn't it close to 5 million left? After, after we take the money out of there, there'd still be 5 million in Capital Projects. And a lot of the restricted... And a lot of the restricted funds are restricted by the commission. There's, you have to see, I mean, this, you can't just get up here and say, "These are restricted funds," or "These are open funds." Everything has strings attached to it. And so you just have to, you have to go through each line and see what you can use the money for. But keep in mind, five years ago, when they built the conference center, we were down to eighty-five, and we're back up to a hundred and two to a hundred and five million.
Didn't we at that timeframe?
And we've been paying debt off during that time.
How much debt have we paid off? Do you know, Mark? I was thinking it was about eighteen million, but I, don't quote me, not that much. What did we pay off?
In 2020, you paid just short of ten million dollars off, when you paid off the library and the public safety complex. You make debt payments every year, but those were the two big payoffs that you paid off
All right. Mr. Chair, can I ask a question just from me?
Sure.
I know I'm not really public, but I was just wondering when...
What's your name?
Depends on the day.
So, the question I have, just so I'm clear on the terms, because you're saying, out of the general fund, are you meaning the unrestricted fund balance remaining? Because that's our savings is actually fund balance, right? I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding when we're saying what is in our savings or what's held in reserve. Because general fund would be those monies that are appropriated for each of the departments and offices and all that kind of stuff. And that's all under Fund 10, right? Fund 10 is your general, your general fund. But then we have fund balance, which is the reserves, and there are unrestricted funds and then restricted, like for capital improvement or stuff. Can we just get some clarification on what we're actually talking about? Because I think the terms have been thrown around a little bit, and I'm a little confused even in my own mind of what we're talking about, because, of course, as the county attorney's office, we would advise that we do have enough in our fund balance to be able to take care of emergencies. If we have a grader that goes down and we need, you know, two-hundred thousand dollars to buy a grader, or AC units go down in this building in the middle of August, we need to be able to replace them, or people aren't going to work in the offices that don't have windows. I'm looking at Kazir's office, somehow he got windows. They can stay and work when it's ninety degrees outside, but others may have a hard time working in this building if we don't have air conditioning in the middle of summer, that sort of thing. So, can I get some clarification on that, just under that advice? Yeah, walk me through it, because I'm going to admit I am not...
On the overhead is Fund 10, which is the general fund. So, the fund balance, which is the reserve, as you were talking about, at the beginning of 2022 was sixteen million, eighty-two thousand dollars. The proposed budget adjustment transfers seven million dollars out into debt service, leaving with nine million dollars in the fund balance, in the general fund.
And using that, what we're talking about, those are, the remaining nine million is unrestricted. That's essentially what most people would consider our savings account, where we're...
You've also got another savings account called the Tax Stability Trust Fund, which has eight million dollars. So there's another, that's the rainy day fund on top of this. I mean, so, this is just the general fund. There's still nine million left in there. You've got another eight million in the Tax Stability Trust Fund, which is the rainy day fund. So, you know, it takes your capital projects down to five million, which... Ah, come on. This is the capital projects fund. So we're transferring eleven-point-eight million out. You still have five million. That help?
That does help me, because, again, what I was stating is, we do need to make sure that we're keeping enough to handle all of the unknowns that may, that may come up any budget year, which they happen. So that's my advice, is let's make sure we keep enough in savings.
I just wanted to make one comment. So, it is true, values are going up this year. But for UNA County, when values go up, the tax rate goes down. Or if values go down, the tax rate goes up, because we collect the same amount of money. And so I just wanted to make that clarification.
Back to that fund balance of nine-point-eight million. Our main revenues do not come in until November, so we need cash in the bank to pay the day-to-day bills throughout the year. By you doing, taking the seven million, you will be putting the opportunity or the possibility of having to do tax anticipation notes. So you're moving one loan to another loan at a hot, lot higher interest rate. Not saying that'll happen, but you are reducing your fund balance substantially when, because there's been times through the years, and that's been down to like one million, one-and-a-half million in the general fund. If you move seven million, you just put that in the negative cash balance. Fund balance is not always cash in the bank. And yes, Barbara, to confirm, I agree with totally on Barbara, values go up, tax rate
Any other comment from the public? If not, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we're gonna have some discussion between the commission. Commissioner Stringer, I'll let you go first.
Boy, I heard a lot of stuff. And I'm gonna just have to say, when I came to, when I entered the county, I was under the impression that this was a conservative Republican county, and that appealed to me. I came in right at the end of a big boom, and there was a lot of money coming in. So I've actually been watching since 2015, and I can't remember if it was in fifteen, maybe it was sixteen, when we took a loss of half a billion, a billion and a half. We took a large loss and essentially assessed. And so I've been hearing about this, oh, gosh, the tax, the tax rate, this, that, and the other thing. What I have become concerned about is that we are not, I know I mentioned that, it came up at a convention meeting with Rob Bishop. Somebody said UNA County was the most Republican or conservative county in the state, and he looked at me like, "Who said that?" And as it turns out, I think we've had a very progressive budget policy. I've looked back, and because I've been here watching this, and I've done a lot of, I've observed a lot, and I've seen a lot of numbers, and I've heard over and over again, every time we say, "Well, we're not gonna take the certified tax rate, that we're gonna go broke, and we're gonna do this, and we're gonna do that." So as we were sitting here, I went through and I looked at a few things, and I'm thinking, just based on what's gone on, every time we've cut, we haven't taken more, we haven't raised the certified rate, we've cut it, and we still end up with money. And we have lots of money. And what I do notice through all of that is we ran some excessive balances. We carry a lot of money in our funds. Our salaries have been sky-high, especially, I'm gonna just stick right with the elected officials. I did the work on that several years ago, but I went back and revisited it, including the new inflation rates for last year and this year. And by 2015, the salary rate for the commission and the clerk auditor had risen to ninety-five thousand dollars. And that was starting from 2003, 2002, when they were fifty thousand. The inflation rate during that period of time was less than two percent. You know that, because the Federal Reserve kept their rates low. And if you had given, gone back and given a raise every year of three percent to the commission, clerk auditor, all of them, by the time you got through to twenty, I'm guessing for 2023, so that includes three percent every year, and in some years, there was none given even by the federal government, because things were tough. Three percent every year, seven percent for this year, and eight percent for next year, you're still not quite at the salary that you had in 2015. So, for some reason, we, I don't know how we could ever be short on money, because we just kept plowing money back into county programs. Taxpayer money back into county programs. Our insurance was ninety-five-five. Our 401K was, it's not being matched by a penny. It's just more money in there. The 450 program, where we were paying for insurance for people till they turn sixty-five. Bonuses, paying out PTO, even our audits said that was an unfunded liability. It was millions. We tried paying some of that down. So, we're paying a lot of money. We're using a lot, and yet we've been cutting, we've been paying debt, we've been doing all kinds of things with all of these, "Oh, we're gonna go broke, we're gonna have issues." Even as we paid out, not back to the taxpayer who paid it, but to the county organization. And don't get me wrong, that's not the employees' fault. They don't get to make those decisions. That's the elected official's fault, for spending money so that it's, even though we got it all over in the, in the surpluses, that we could still pay and pay, and as we've tried to trim those back, I mean, I don't wanna get facetious, but I'm struggling to find another thing we could've paid employees for, or elected officials for. There wasn't, we didn't miss much. We were paying everywhere. So when I hear, "Well, if we take this money out, and we go down, and we get rid of a GO bond, that will automatically or immediately put two-and-a-half million back into property taxpayers' pockets," I just don't, nine years tells me that there is not only no reason to panic, I'm still worried that we're leaving a whole lot left for a progressive agenda that may still be out there. That bothers me. So I have no concerns whatsoever about retiring debt and putting money back into people's pockets, especially during a recession. Why in the heck do I wanna take your money, keep it for my programs in my county, when I think you could use it better? So, I got all those numbers. I'm not making up one single thing. Tammy, probably, you grandma this, you were able to figure it out and find out how overpaid the elected officials were? No good reason for it. But anyway, that's all I gotta say. I'm, I am very much in favor of returning this, getting rid of this debt, and it's not just this year, and it's not, we've gotten rid of, in 2014 election, 2015, the county and the special service districts were carrying a combined ninety million dollars in debt, and now the combined level is, gosh, I think it's less than fifty, forty, thirty, something like that. That's paying off a lot of debt, Tammy, and it's happened over eight years. And this last one to go, this doesn't just cut our mineral lease money balance, it actually puts money back in your pocket. I don't understand why anybody wouldn't like that. Anyway, I'm done.
Most of the comments, the questions were answered. There was one on the MBA that was brought up about pulling money that we had put in to pay off that debt. There's the Western Park, the Rec Center, Landfill, Tri-County Health, the airport fence, the airport snowplow, and the conference center. We left one-point-three million in there to cover the portions that the county owns, the county owes on. If I follow that correctly, it's, we, there's about seven-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand that the county would owe on. Right now, the Rec Center is in the MBA. That payment's being made by the Rec District. The Conference Center is being paid by impact mitigation. And Tri-County Health is being paid by Tri-County Health. As long as the mineral lease money's staying and going like it is, we'll continue to let those, it's the MBA, it's not the county, it's the MBA. So I feel comfortable taking that money and leaving the one-point-three that we have left in there to cover the debt that we have, and have a little extra. Commissioner Stringer hit Wayne Semper's comment, as he came up and was talking about, it's a no-brainer to pay off the debt if you have the money. The only one thing that he left out is it's an instant two-point-four million dollars back to the taxpayer. I personally, I see no reason where we can up the income at the jail. We can create a few more jobs, up the income there, to pay the operation costs. I have a hard time seeing why we wouldn't want to give money back to the taxpayer and pay that off. So with that, I'll turn to time if you have anything.
I think we've covered it. I echo what you two have said, and it's been great, and it's, it's a great financial decision, and I think it is time that, you know, that, you know, we as the commission here have worked very hard to protect the interest of the elected people in the UNA County, and I think it's a great move. I think it's a great idea, and fully in support of it.
The one comment that I do wanna mention, Wendy had said, and I wanna echo what she said, is it has been from the employees, from the decisions that have been made, responsible employees that have made good decisions, they have saved the taxpayer a lot of money this year. I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but we put, I think it was close to seven million away this year, wasn't it, Mark? From, we have the revenue stream of about fifty-six, and we had the expenditures of about forty-nine.
Yeah, you're looking at all funds combined.
All funds combined.
You know, just the general fund. We presented this earlier, two-point-nine million just from the general fund.
That doesn't happen from employees that's trying to skirt the system and try to pay off and buy things that they don't need. So they did, they have done a great job, and they have done a great job for the last four years that I've been here. So with that, John, do you have any comments that you'd like to add? Any others?
So we're out of the public hearing. We have the next item on the agenda is to approve Resolution 06062022-R12022 Budget Amendment Increase.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Resolution 06062022-R12022 Budget Amendment Increase.
Okay. We have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion between the commission? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Proposed Amendment to Defense Contract to Include Mileage Reimbursement.
Next, next three.
Oh, yeah.
The next three.
Next three.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. All three items that are on the agenda deal with changes to the contracts that we have for the indigent defense attorneys who we have under contract to provide those services in our county. I just want the commission to be aware that this year's... I just want the commission to be aware that this year's grant increased to 400, $400,810. Combining that with the county's contribution to my department of $643,850, the total budget that we have for this year is $1,044,660. And 400 of that is paid through the IDC grant. The first item, or the first proposed amendment, if you, uh, we, I've sent you redlined copies of only those pages of the contract that are, that changes are being made, try to save trees here. So the first one deals with Section 4.2, so if you take that first one and just go to 4.2, you'll see the language there. We received a grant, it's a one-time funding grant of $10,000 for mileage reimbursement for out-of-area attorneys that are coming into the county. The concern, this is why I worked with Mr. Stermer with the language of this, that they didn't want this provision to be construed to make them appear as employees of the county if there was an audit. So Mr. Stermer worked on some language here and you can see it right there. Subject to available grant funding, mileage will be reimbursed at the applicable state travel policy rate, which allows mileage to be computed from reputable online map services such as Google Maps or MapQuest and will be limited to the most economical usually traveled routes. We don't usually have these reimbursement mileage things, but we just had, there was some extra money and they decided to give that to our county. So that's the first item on the agenda.
Okay. Any further questions, any questions, entertain a motion?
Do you want to do?
Can I ask just a clarifying question? So, and maybe I missed this in our discussions because Lance and I have talked about this quite a bit, but something you said just triggered in my mind, this is a one-time, so just for 2022? Or the, which fiscal year are we dealing with?
It's the only one that we know about, and this is actually going to end, this, this contract one is going to end the, on June 31st.
So they'll need to put in their reimbursement request?
And they, yeah, they've already been working on that, they're tracking that through their calendaring system.
Okay.
So they're going to be putting that in so that we can tap into that $10,000. There may be some money in the future, but it's not guaranteed in any particular grant cycle.
So is this paying back or paying, adding it into next year's contract?
It's only going to pay from January to June.
Okay.
Of, of this year.
Okay.
Okay. Are they all, are all three of them about the same kind of deal?
The next two are alike, but this one's a little different.
This one's a little bit different.
Let's do a motion on this one.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Proposed Amendment to the Defense Contracts to include mileage reimbursement, subject to available grants funding for the period January 2022 to June 30, 2022, as presented.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passed.
Okay. So we're on the second one. This is dealing with an amendment to the District Court Indigent Defense Contracts, which we term Restoration of Pre-Pandemic Compensation and Contract Renewals. What happened here is when the pandemic happened, we lost a lot of funding through the grant. And so we had to reduce, and just as an example, we had to reduce by about 6% the District Court contracts. We've since restructured the contracts in juvenile court, so it's not exactly 6%, but that's kind of the, the ballpark that we're dealing with. We made a request, I made a request this last grant season that we would be restored those pre-pandemic, the pre-pandemic funding. And that was granted to us, which took us up to the 400,000 of grant funding that we had this year. So the first one is dealing with, if you go to 4.1 of that first, that first stapled document that you've got, what that says is two, two different things. One of them is that we stick with the, the 7,387 per month rate through June 30th of 2022 and then beginning July 1st of 2022, it will increase to the amount of 7,500 per month, which is what it was before the pandemic hit. So that's what is happening there. And then the other thing that we did on this is because our fiscal year and the grant fiscal year happens, we're always staggering that. We had a decision to make of whether or not we would make this a six-month contract or an 18-month contract, anything but a one-year contract. And so guess what, I chose 18 months so I don't have to keep coming back here. So that's what, that's what that next one is about with the District Court. Now, if you take your, go to the second and third groups, there are two different types of contracts that we have in juvenile court. One of them is for delinquency, juvenile delinquency, which is representation for the underage minor in juvenile court. And then we have two separate contracts for child welfare cases, which is where we are representing parents when DCFS gets involved and, for example, children might be removed from the family and then we represent the parents to work on reunification efforts for that. The child welfare contracts are going to change from $6,000 to $6,140. That's a restoration of the pre-pandemic amounts. And then the delinquency is going to go from $4,250 to $4,390. And that's, that's all 4.1 of those, of those remaining two juvenile contracts. So there's, just because of the workload, it changes a little bit. And again, the term of the agreement is 18 months rather than six months, I just chose that. But because that's a change, we need that to be approved as well. Those are the, those are the changes that we have to the contract.
Okay, so both of the, um, the Eighth District Court is for, is it, was it for finishing out this year or is this for starting July 1st?
It starts July, start July 1st.
July 1st, and both the juvie contracts are the same.
Same thing, they stay the lower rate until July 1st.
Okay.
Okay.
Want to do both at the same time?
Chair.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the amendment to the District Court Indigent Defense Contracts to the Restoration of Pre-Pandemic Compensation. And at the same time, or include in that, the Juvenile Court Indigent Defense Restoration as well, even though that is two contracts, one for child welfare and one for representation, as presented.
We have a motion.
We need signatures on that.
Yes, including authorization of signature.
Okay, I'll second it.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you. I have a bundle of contracts that I need your.
Can you take them down to Ellen's and we'll take care of them down there? All right, thank you. Ah, okay, so now, let's, what time is it?
1:37.
Let's do public comment and then we'll see what time we have left. So we've had a lot of public comment, but we'll open it back up. We'll have about 10 minutes of public comment, try to keep your comments to three minutes if you would. And we'll go to there. Come on, Sonia.
Just two quick things. You don't have to answer it, just comment. But I do know with my past experience serving on the CIB board, that if you do pay off too much debt, when you go to CIB for grant loan funding, they will give you less because you have less debt. And also, as far as bonding, Duchenne County School District had a difficult time bonding to build the new school. I think they attempted that for, I believe it was seven to 10 years before the public finally approved for them to build that new school. So you can't always bond and build and do things when you would like, even though it'd be nice. And a lot of times, it's when the economy may not be the best is when you have to do that. And it's, it can be very difficult. I do know there's other ways to go about doing that, but I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on the CIB one just for a minute. In a lot of cases, that may be true.
Was.
It was true. But we went out at the fire district, we have no debt. We went out and received 3, $3.2 million in grant. And we're putting in, we bought a $30,000 piece of property and we're putting in maybe 400, 500,000.
They give more than we needed.
Yeah, they give us more than we needed, more than we wanted, so they treat us, they treat us well. Any other public comment?
I, I, yeah, probably in the public comment there, the stock show is this week. Wednesday at 12 noon. For everybody that I have paid, bet all year long and haven't paid you, I buy lunch down there.
That's pretty much everybody.
Well, it is, well, I've never paid anybody, I lose, I never win either, but anyway, 12 noon. Stock show, love to have everybody come.
We don't have Lisha, but we just, we had the outlaw trail RV, or RV, uh, trail ride. It was huge, it was great.
There were 700 and, 750-ish people here, 400, 400 ATVs. They were here, just rough ideas, they, they figured they dropped about $500,000 in the community. That's not counting the ones that came early and the ones that are still here and staying this next week riding. There's a big group that's staying and, and bringing some more friends out that's going to ride this whole week. So it was a great thing. County, county put on, Lisha and her office did an amazing job, Matt's office with Mike Cook, all the volunteers, the sheriff's department.
Bernal City.
Bernal City. You just hard, you hate to start naming people because there were so many volunteers that put so much time into making that work.
Maple City down there in the park.
No arrests this time?
No arrests this time that I know of, not yet anyway. So, Mike.
Moving back up to the public, through the surplus properties. John, we need to do quitclaim deeds on them, I should have, I didn't think about that till just right now.
I think so.
Do we need to have them be part of that motion that we made? Because now we need to issue the quitclaim deeds?
I, I think we're covered because they approved the sale of it, so then it's just administrative.
I just wanted, so when we presented a quitclaim deed to Commissioner Haslam that he can sign it?
I know, I, I think we're, a, a great question, but I think we're covered because they did approve the sale
They did approve the sales.
That came in, so now we're just effectuating that action.
Okay. I will work with you and Brenda to get the quitclaim deeds on those. As far as tax deeds, we got them, we can take care of those.
Okay, great.
Any other public comment?
Want to do the minutes?
Straight to length.
Yes.
It'll be on the minutes.
We'll close public comment then, without that. But I do want to answer a question that Tammy, that you yelled out in the back about the Buckskin Hills. John, I don't know if you happen to have that, or we can summarize it, but on the letter that we received on the snow hill, is a perfect time to, to clear this all up.
So you're, you're referring to the investigation that, is that what you're referring to? So my office in, uh, working with the state, the governor's office of planning and budget, they have been doing some investigations on the snow hill expenditures and also on specific applicants for CARES grant funding. On the snow hill itself, there, one of the documents that came back was a report that had a paragraph in there that stated as of March. So let me be more, I don't have it in front of me, so I apologize, I'm paraphrasing.
I'm sorry to throw it on you, the question was brought up.
They, they stated that they had opened the investigation, they were working with the US Treasury on this matter, US Treasury took it over and so the state deferred to US Treasury actions. And that as of March 2022, US Treasury reported back to the governor's office of planning and budget that that investigation is now closed.
So, so with the, the state and the federal government, they both, there was plenty of complaints turned in. Both entities have re-investigated it, they came and visited with us, we did a meeting and it's, we're good. It's closed. So.
Make a motion, we return.
No, we can't. Sorry.
That's right.
We have a bid opening and possible bid award for Western Park Ice Rink and Amphitheater Project. It is, what is it, 1?
1:45.
I would like to recess, get myself. Yeah, go ahead.
Is that something that I could be excused from?
Yes, I don't care. We can, we can do it. And if, you know, if it's, I mean, if the, if the engineers are good with next week, we can do it next Monday and just give them less time.
Got time.
I know there were a couple of questions. I, I know there were a couple of questions that came to me through text on the timing, that they did express that that was a quick turnaround to have that deadline. But then we restated why we needed a faster turnaround because of the anticipated construction window, especially for the ice rink so that the oiler schedule and the high school hockey league would be able to utilize the new. So there, there is reason for that quick schedule, but they did express some concern.
Okay.
But I can't speak for them on whether or not they could still do it in three weeks rather than four weeks. I, I don't have an answer to that.
Well, I'm, I don't have a meeting at four, so are you good at four?
Yeah.
So you could be excused if you'd like to be.
I could.
So I'd like to recess until four o'clock if we can, take the time to get together. Can you, to meet? Okay. Let's get together in the commission's small chambers and go through them and then we'll reconvene at four o'clock and make a decision.